All right. Thank you. It is Tuesday, May 27th, 2025. Do I have a motion? Those being ordered except the agenda.
So.
Mr. Gilmore, second of five.
Second.
Conley, all in favor?
Hi.
I won remote, so I'll both want to be taken by my role.
Right.
Miss, Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Hi.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes, just messing up your last meeting one more time.
No.
Yeah.
It's all good.
The Citrus Select Board is committed to providing environment and respect during some meetings. We ask all members to interact and plug in there even when there's disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and marginalized community, to be welcomed and respected. Ask that our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. So, uh, we are, we have a wonderful guest, so we might, we have a walk-in while we wait for, come on up.
Here I am. Where would you like me?
You're right up here, your name and address for the record.
All right. You can sit right in the middle of there, yeah? Hardly from that microphone so we can remember. I feel like we're in trouble now.
No, you're not in trouble.
Well, you never know. You never know, right?
It's never predictable. Heather, what do you say?
Usually it's my seven-year-old, but no. Um, hi, everybody. I'm Dr. Barry. I live in Situate. Um, right over by the lighthouse, I have a seven-year-old son, London.
Your address, your address for the record.
Your, where, your address?
Oh, 77 Rebecca Road. In Situate. You're welcome. Uh, so I have a seven-year-old son whose name's London, goes to Wampata. Um, so I started a nonprofit this year. It's called the London Project. So a little background, my son was diagnosed autism when he was a year and a half. He was nonverbal until he was five. Um, I was always a firm believer that it's his story to tell, not mine. And it's his path and journey. Um, that said, he's the coolest kid ever and he's inspired me so much. And, um, I strive to often be more like him. So I came up with this idea to create an organization, um, around inclusivity and just being kind. So, uh, my goal here, short term, is to raise as much money as we can for local community charities, like-minded charities, things like that. Um, we'll be doing a lot of community outreach, uh, public speaking. And, uh, the goal is to have 50% allocated towards, um, our foundation, which then we would use that money to provide resources. So down the road, we hope to open an art center that's inclusive. Or maybe if you are in a wheelchair and you come in and you roll up to, you know, a station that is, you know, art-based, and then maybe other kids, you know, like my son has one of his good friends in a wheelchair, and so it's like they can go to these things together. And this isn't just for children. Um, we do focus on adults as well. And we hope to, um, donate a lot of what we, um, raise to Autism Speaks and other similar charities. But with that said, um, we also want to donate to an array of different charities because it is about inclusion. Um, so, yeah, so that's kind of my inspiration, where all this came from. And our first event is June 7th at the Drift Inn, six to 10. Um, it's the London Project launch. So, um, all are welcome. And those proceeds will go directly to Autism Speaks. And then September 15th, we have a ball tournament. And, um, so that's kind of off and coming. But, um, but yeah, I hope to really kind of move this thing near and far. Um, I lived in, I'm from Hangum, I grew up in Hangum, but then I kind of scattered everywhere. Was a little nomad for a while. Um, lived in New York City for half my life, Manhattan. So I've kind of, I lived in Iowa for a little bit. Different story for a different day. And Costa Rica, so I've kind of been lucky enough to have experiences in different places with an array of different people. And I've worked, uh, a lot with special needs kids. And, um, I just wanted to create something in the community that I can expand. However, because I do think that inclusion and kindness sounds like a very simple thing, but I think it's something that a lot of people could benefit from being educated more about it. So, um, that's kind of our goal here. Gives you an idea, but happy to answer any questions that you might have. Um, but yeah, I'm super excited about it, so thanks for having me talk about it.
I love, love your project.
Please come, please come to me. I brought, um, I brought flyers, which I can show you, and you just kind of scan the QR code. It's on Eventbrite as well. Uh, but it'll be fun. We have live music, we're gonna have raffles, all sorts of stuff like that, so.
I love it.
That's it, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, y'all. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Wish you well.
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
I'll try to be in golf when I'm with William.
I know, well, sure.
Have you been in touch with the Corse Foundation?
Briefly, briefly.
They are your people.
That's what I, I think I, I need to reach out to them 100%.
They're your people.
Yep.
I'm telling you right now, what they have done, I think they've been in the systems maybe 20 years.
Yep.
I don't know which way you're talking about. And they have done remarkable, remarkable jobs.
Good to know.
And they're, they are extremely inclusive and especially interested in people who need to be brought in.
Sure.
Um, and if I'm not mistaken, the housing that we're rolling up in North Situate is kind of an outcrop of that group, a sale project, and that is for adults with disabilities, especially I believe autism is a high amount.
That's awesome.
So it, there's a very, very active, uh, community.
Community there.
I'm sure they want to raise you.
Okay. Yeah, I think, so my son did, um, he was involved in a program called Knock the Mile there, where, but that was the only thing, it was kind of like a brief, he's been, poor kid has been overloaded with therapy, jujitsu, you know, or sat and the other for a year or so. Um, but, so.
We all moved into our children.
You know, it's like, what? Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, it's like, unlike organized chaos, like I said, but, um, but yeah, so I'll definitely look into that.
Yeah.
For talking about it.
Yep, appreciate you coming in for.
Yeah, thanks so much.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, you're moving on up today, tonight. It is a very special ladies. This is the last meeting for two of our members. And I actually will develop a personal audience up here. And we have some, a few things, and then you have something to present, and there's a few things that you'd like to talk about as well.
Great, great to be here. It's always amazing how small this tournament is when I walk, when I grew up walking down town. Very, I thought it was actually a cable office in North Situate. Here it is, small, with a table. It was definitely here when I took my first tour of the, uh, town, all 30 years ago, the shop that was here. Congressman Keating couldn't be here tonight. Um, he wishes it could be used in, I think I forgot that, I'm actually walking back in there now, so I'm sorry, I'm a couple nights late. Um, before I begin, he asked me to pass along some good news for Situate. Um, the past three, maybe four years, the town has submitted applications for, um, maybe project funding, which is our big fancy congressional work to say earmarks. Um, I think before Congressman Keating actually represented the district, um, generally showed some of the applications just to be safe. Um, and then submitted the last three years, um, applications for the wastewater treatment plant, um, sorry, for the water treatment plant and for, uh, Cedar Point Seawall. So, uh, we were successful with earmarks for the water treatment plant. Uh, we were successful last year in getting, uh, a million dollars allocated through FEMA for the Cedar Point Seawall. Unfortunately, those spending bills didn't make it last year. Um, and just last week Congressman Keating submitted another new project funding request for Cedar Point Seawall, even though $10 million. Um, we anticipated it would probably be closer to 1 million, but, um, Situate, because probably we should have the town administrator have a cellphone. Um, but also because it puts together fantastic applications. Situate is the only community, um, other than sitting in that, for Congressman Keating, just sort of receiving, uh, some of the project funding for years from now, so, uh, looking forward to that. But now, while we're here, I'm sad about it because Karen Conley and Karen Canfield have both been pretty proud over the years. Uh, Congressman, um, he wanted to, uh, pass along flags over the United States Capitol as well as certainly gets, uh, special congressional recognition, um, for both Karen Conley and Karen Canfield. Um, you all deserve a lot of credit because having two parents on the board, it was been confusing and the confusion in our office because everything came back like KC, KC. Uh, and then I thought, I'm a genius, I'm gonna label it C A N C O, and I'm good at reading the handwriting. So, uh, I have a flag flown over the Capitol, I've identified which one is which. Uh, I have a flag flown over the Capitol, um, as well as certainly the recognition signed by Congressman Keating, um, recognition of all of your service on the select board, and the library trustees, advisory, and preparation. So, uh, thank you, you've been great partners. Karen, I was in New Bedford today. You can attest that it is sometimes hard to get from here to there. Um, so I'm glad to be here and, um, happy to be here on the other Congress of honor. Well, thank you both for your service.
Thank you for working around that room. Thank you so much for, uh, for the accolades and for coming all the way across town to, to bring those four.
Absolutely. We will mail you yours, Karen.
I'll be in to collect, kind of my badge anyway.
Yeah.
We can, yeah. We can still get them, or you can leave them.
You're still allowed in the building.
Oh, she could pick up, you know.
On your side. Not quite.
Just let us know, Jim.
Not at all.
Well, I appreciate it. I know that Karen appreciates it. And if she'd been feeling well enough, she would be her usual energetic self. Uh, but unfortunately, she's not feeling well. Um, I will say in our brief that it's been an honor to serve in Situate. And it's been great meeting people like Congressman Keating, Congressman Lynch, when he was our spokesperson, um, our state representative, Senator. Everyone works very hard on behalf of the town. But, um, it's greatly, greatly appreciated being, um, I'm honored to have had this job. So thank you to everyone in Situate. And, uh, we're not going anywhere, right Karen?
No, we'll be on the beach, though.
Well, yeah. But if she's on the beach, don't bother her.
Yeah.
I don't go to the beach because I have the sun. But, um, no, seriously, we're, we're around. So hopefully people will reach out to us and ask us to help in some of the endeavors we have going on in town, including the Pier 44 Park. We need some funding for that, even. Mordecai Lincoln, which Susan knows all about. Uh, we're gonna need probably funding for that. Um, and so I, I have a funny feeling that, uh, they'll be seeing us. So, thank you very much.
Oops. Now, you're, we're not, you're not, uh, we're not done yet. There's more out, you know, there are more things to say, so thank you. Um, Jay, do you have?
We have some. I have two that I need to read. And I, out of, uh, out of, uh, a combination to our not spry person right now, I think I'll start with Karen Canfield. This is a resolution, whereas we are gathered this evening to recognize and honor years of dedicated service of the town of Situate by Karen B. Canfield. And whereas Ms. Canfield first became a select board member in 2017, serving on the board with distinction for eight years, she was elected to the board with Laura Curran, John Denny, Sean Harris, and Anthony Vagnani. Ms. Canfield served as chair of the board in 2020. Prior to joining the select board, Ms. Canfield served on the Situate Library of Trustees from 2013 to 2017. Ms. Canfield was and is a champion for residents and employees throughout her tenure, demonstrating care and compassion. And whereas the town of Situate has seen great change during the past eight years, two members to mention all of them, while on the board, Ms. Canfield supported significant investments in infrastructure, including the new public safety complex, senior center, middle school, and renovated public library. She further collaborated to bring the town significant improvements to the Situate Lighthouse and critical water system enhancements that will include a new treatment plan. Ms. Canfield has always been a strong advocate for the business community, has worked with the Economic Development Commission on the "Situate Loves Local" quote-unquote campaign to support business impacted by the pandemic and assisted with the creation of the Situate Visitor Center to drive tourism to our community. And whereas, while on the select board, Ms. Canfield also served as an integral liaison on the charter review committee to revamp the charter after more than 20 years. During her time on the board, Ms. Canfield served as a select board liaison during various periods to the library trustees, planning board, water resources commission, animal control board, beach commission, bicycle committee, council on aging, economic development commission, public building commission, Plymouth County Advisory Board, school committee, sister cities, street acceptance committee, bylaw review committee, charter review committee, conservation commission, capital planning, historic commission, Situate Chamber of Commerce, veteran services advisory council, and zoning board of appeals. Therefore, be it resolved that Karen B. Canfield accept this resolution with the resounding thanks and appreciation of the select board and the entire town of Situate. Your long tenure as a volunteer of public service for over 10 years has benefited our community in many ways. There's so many years to come. Signed, the 13th day of May, 2025, attested by Catherine A. Gardner, town clerk, and Andrew Goodrich, Chair Susan Harrison and James Gilmore, Vice Chairman first.
That was a lot of words, Mr. Clark. Thank you. Thank you so much. Um, I forgot about some of those things. Been a long haul. Um, Mr. Chair, I of course can't help but take the mic and have a few words. Is now the appropriate time?
Of course. You have the floor.
Thank you very much. I'm very sorry, very sorry not to be in the room tonight, um, with all of you and might get a little, you know, whatever, but, um, I unfortunately am not well. Uh, once again, I'll make you do roll call for a little bit, but I will jump, jump off after this section, but I did want to note that so as, as the, as Clark mentioned, September 19th, 19, 2017, I walked in for our first meeting in that room. Al Banger, oh, Al Banger was the acting town administrator. Mark Kern was our chair, and that, and this body was known as Select Met. So that's one thing that I, uh, wanted to note as something I was very proud of being part of changing for the better. Uh, the first order of business was Mr. David Darty walked in to advocate for wind turbine curtailment. The great Mark Lancy came in with a donation of a flagpole for the high school turf fields at the time. And I began, uh, as I began my tenure on the board, we were faced with citing the senior center and a selection of a town administrator, not small tasks. In January of 2018, Mr. Jim Bedrow took over as TA. And two days later, we were slammed with a nor'easter. And as a new kid, I got a ride over to the P, um, to the public safety complex because my road was flooded to see if the team need anything. And I was amazed that Jim, also the new kid, was working so hard, hand in glove, with then-Chief Stewart and Chief Murphy. We, I knew we were in good hands. Since that day, I have witnessed countless times when our highly esteemed professional operational team, uh, throughout all departments, have stepped in to serve this community, and I'm profoundly grateful for all that you have done. The past eight years, as, uh, as Mr. Gilmore said, we're made, uh, we're filled with decisions, big and small, and they've made our mark on our town, and I'm, I won't go through them all again, but I do want to note that, you know, the investment in sewer for North Situate is not just pipes and pavements. We are on a path to bring public health improvements, growth, and the promise of progress in North Situate. We've addressed local communications issues as the Mariner faded off into the distance. And I appreciate the press being here tonight. Um, and we found ways to reach our, our residents in other ways. We stood together, well, most of us stood together to protect Border Street from development and preserving this beautiful historic way. And, and something I know the board is thrilled about, we cleaned up our policies so that they're easier to find and follow. We struck a, a balance between sustainability and serenity in our neighborhoods when we finally shut the turbines down at night. And we're going forward, working on things like getting people out of cars and into bikes safely around town. And we have posh potties at Egypt. And while the board is always open to voices, all voices, during my time here, we have made clear, as Mr. Goodrich wrote, said at the beginning of the meeting, that we will not tolerate behaviors and actions that exclude anyone in this town. These are very solid accomplishments. Um, I am filled with gratitude for the privilege of having served this town, and I've seen countless volunteers on our boards and committees giving their time, um, and, and their voices on things that, you know, provide a stake in the future of our town. The mentoring I received, uh, Chris is still here, from our federal and state delegations, as well as our peers and other communities, has really been amazing and, and, and the support has been extraordinary. Together, we have been good stewards of our community, and I'm very proud of this work for all the years. And while I appreciate all the people that have pitched in over the years, there are a few people that I would be remiss not to call out. Michelle, Shari, Jen, Lorraine, thank you. You're the reason the select board can function, and your work behind the scenes makes everything moving forward. Seth Pfeiffer, who I always call the man behind the curtain, thank you for keeping residents informed and making sure everything runs smoothly behind the camera. Nancy, there she is. Nancy, um, you're not just a financial whiz, you are the backbone of many of the committees that serve this town and this community. Jim Bedrow, from the day one, you've been a steady hand through the storms, pandemics, and everything in between. I thank you for your leadership and for always being there with sound advice and guidance. And I hope you'll keep sending me very bad jokes because I need them right now. Um, and I wish I were going to be here at the end of the meeting to, um, codify your new contract. To the board members, all you guys, uh, I've served with all the years, here, present, and not, um, that I've seen in the past, I've learned something from each of you. And even when we didn't agree, I respected your thoughtfulness and your love for this town. The board works best when it works together, and we've been fortunate to serve with some truly outstanding public servants. I know some, the people of Situate will continue to choose leaders who care deeply and lead with integrity. And finally, to the other Jim in my life, my husband, who's lying on the couch over there. Uh, JP Bill and Lani. Um, this is where it's me. I can't thank you enough for supporting me for this, for every dinner I missed and every not tonight because I had a town commitment. I'm so grateful for your patience and understanding. I'm really looking forward to walking the beach every Tuesday night this summer. So as I retire from this board, I do so with confidence, not just in the leaders who will carry the torch forward, but in the spirit of Situate itself, a spirit that rolls up its sleeves and gets to work. And since this is the last time I have the mic, and you know that I will always just jump in, I, I want to close by sharing something that is deeply, um, personal that I believe in. I believe that each of us is given a gift in some way, uh, to help those around us. I urge everyone to know what your contribution is, no matter how big or small, and no matter where your passion calls you, and you, is, it calls you, is needed and deeply appreciated. Thank you.
Wonderful, as always. Um, Karen, I have to tell you on a personal level, and you talked about a little bit how you love policy, and I think sometimes you might even call yourself a policy nerd, the process, uh, of governing. I think folks need to know, one of the beauties of that is that it gives, um, your unique perspective is a huge mark and a legacy, I think, for all of us, because you're looking not at the, the now, but those are permanent things. What you've worked on are the permanent policies that we can have for years and years and years to come. And for everything that's been said, I think that lasting impact for you to not just make your mark in those eight years, but knowing that's gonna be, uh, it's changed the way I've thought about, um, being on the board, and I, and I think there's been some changes on with that as well, and it's been a joy and a privilege, uh, to serve here.
Definitely. I think it's, my emotions did it. Okay. This family was dedication.
And please get well, and we can't wait to see you again when you are feeling better. Yep. Now, and this is, I know that we're home. We're here. We have another lovely, um, proclamation.
Yes, I'll try and, in the, this is just as serious, so bear with me, please. Resolution, whereas we are gathered this evening to recognize and honor years of dedicated service to the town of Situate by Karen E. Conley. Whereas, Ms. Conley first became a select board member in 2019, serving on the board with distinction for six years, she was elected to the board with Laura Curran, Sean Harris, Anthony Vagnani, and Karen Canfield. Ms. Conley served as Chair of the board in 20, uh, 2021. Prior to joining the select board, Ms. Conley served on the Community Preservation Committee from 2007 to 2019, Advisory Committee from 2011 to 2014, and Community Preservation Committee from 2014 to 2019. During her tenure, Ms. Conley dedicated her time and many talents to improve our community for residents and employees while exhibiting dignity and grace. And whereas, the town of Situate has seen great change during the past six years, two members to mention all of them, while on the board, Ms. Conley advocated for the preservation of open space and worked to secure the border street and Mordecai Lincoln purchases. The Lawson Green Senior Affordable Housing Project was near and dear, supporting from its inception in 2017 while serving on the Community Preservation Committee through its opening in 2021. In addition, she championed investments in infrastructure, including a new senior center, renovations to the Veterans Memorial Gymnasium, new Situate High School Athletic Field Complex, and new Hummer Rock Tire Station. She further collaborated to make significant improvements to the storks, to the historic Situate Lighthouse, Widow's Walk Clubhouse, and critical water system enhancements that will include a new water treatment plant. And whereas, while on the select board, Ms. Conley served as the select board liaison on the Advisory Committee, Animal Control Board, Bylaw Review Commission, Capital Planning Committee, Community Preservation Committee, School Committee, Situate Harbor Resilience Management Plan, Task Force, Water Resources Commission, Board of Health, Coastal Advisor Advisor Commission, Conservation Commission, Traffic Rules and Regulations, Plymouth County Advisory Board, Public Building Commission, Street Acceptance, Economic Development Commission, Planning Board, Shellfish Advisory Committee, Cable TV Advisory Committee, Coastal Advisory Committee, Gold Park by Redevelopment Committee, and Situate Harbor Advisory Redevelopment Commission. Therefore, be it resolved that Karen Conley accept this resolution with the resounding thanks and appreciation of the select board and the entire town of Situate. Your ongoing dedication as a volunteer of public service for nearly 20 years as an to the Federal Department of Health Committee in a myriad of ways that are greatly admired. Signed, this 27th day of May, 2025, attested by Kathleen A. Gardner, town clerk, Situate Select Board, Andrew Goodrich, Chair, as soon as Harrison Vice Chair James Gilmore clerk. Bye.
I have nothing. All I can say is, um, there's a recent model of Karen's. She's the Karen Pan, and she just did. I'm unfortunately the Karen Han, which is why we had to go with a different, on a different group from, in K1 and K2, which I wasn't so fond of either, but, um, it's been a pleasure to serve on this board, and all I can say is that it's amazing to me. I think it first struck me when I was on the Advisory Committee, how many people in town it takes to run this town. It's run almost entirely by volunteers in terms of numbers. Um, and the staff that is actually paid at Town Hall, they don't get paid as much as they should get paid because they work all the time. And they have really, you know, they support all the boards and committees, and, um, as I said, it's amazing to me. I, I felt like I had no idea until I saw how many people it really takes to run even a small town like ours. So, um, I won't go much further other than to thank people in Town Hall, Shaw, uh, Jen, and, um, Shari. I'm gonna get that name right.
We got it.
You did, you got it.
I've been nervous about her name since she joined the symbol. I've been nervous about her name since she joined the select board. Jen and Nancy, and I see Kevin Cafferty's here. So many people that have been great to work with and really make things happen. So I won't go on any further, but I would also be remiss if I didn't thank my long-suffering husband, who every Tuesday, every other Tuesday night, I'd say, so what are you cooking yourself for dinner? And it's, and there's a lot of other things that go on, but I appreciate my fellow board members. This has been particularly this board this year, cooperative, respectful. We don't always agree and Karen pointed that out, but we disagree respectfully. And so I think it helps us all move forward. We can't always agree on everything, but you know, we need to be polite and good to each other. And this board has been very good to work with. I thank you here especially and everyone else here, so I will say thank you all.
We have a gift for you as well as residents.
Does Karen?
Karen has.
Get a box too?
Yeah, she has a box too.
We're going to door dash it over.
She has a box. I've never had legs blown over the Capitol, so that's interesting. Now I have to think about how to handle it. Will I get it?
You don't hang it in your dorm room.
No. Hang it off the side, a highway beside.
We'll get a folding fee and you could buy a display case and put it up. Give.
I have one. From my dad. I don't think I need another. Thank you.
I'll put it in my office.
Put my name on it, remind you.
Principle. Yeah.
Thank you all.
I'm not going to let you go yet. I have to tell you again on a personal level, there's three lessons. Number one, when you run for office, you run for the position, not against. You embody that. It's a lesson in it was such an amazing experience to come on, if you welcome. Body with you, to work with you, especially given the climate we see around the world today or in America today, if you don't do that, then you fall down. To me, that's sincerely. Be, when I think of Karen Conley, be unafraid. And I know exactly where, if you'd let us know where you're standing and that clarity allows us, me personally, to actually have a real dialogue and real conversation. And that has been inspiring to say. And the amount of work from years to here, you have forgotten more about this town than I will ever know. Where everything is how things work and it has been a wealth of information. And for both of you, this town is going to be a remiss experience. I just thank you for that. And again, never wants to lie, Mike, because I really truly thank you embody you're not letting your hand over your life. And that has been amazing. I see that books. Thank you.
Well, if I could, I'd just like to, I don't know if I'm going to remember it, but it was quite a challenging campaign when you and I were running against two other candidates. A little crazy, but Andrew always kept his cool, but I will tell a story out of the photographs. Andrew was Andrew Goodrich. And this is when we were running, the four of us were running the same seat. And then there was Andrew, what was his name?
Boyle.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, what?
So Andrew Boyle was always commenting on Facebook and he was Mr. Negative. And I said to you a couple of times, I said, listen, this guy's hurting you. Him though, you're a good guy. This guy's not so good. So long and short of it is, when you lost by 72 votes, it was only 72 votes, I credited Andrew Boyle. So when Andrew ran again the next year, I was really glad he did because he proved to be a good candidate, kind of good colleague, and worked out, worked out well, but that particularly, that first campaign was really hair-raising.
That's part of the ages.
Yes.
Now we have to do real business.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to the else. Do we get a really reader's digest version of the court highlights?
That was good.
Let's go.
What's the golf course? That's my one question. How's the golf course?
Good.
Did they find out who did all the damage?
They have not yet.
No? Okay.
I reported a couple changes this morning. We'll post that later.
Okay.
All right. First, get the item, the cello. Karen, you stay with us, Karen. All right.
I'll pass out. Mike, you won't have to worry about me setting up my computer. Bye, guys. See you around.
Well, get better.
Bye, Karen. Get better.
Get better.
Let's start the fighting.
Play.
Yes. It is.
So the, what we're up to is, last summer, we got a grant, $200,000 for fiber optics. I think this is now our third grant, ran out for over two years for it. We had been holding off as long as we could because we were hoping to be able to use this grant, connect fiber to the new water treatment plant. And the issue at hand is there are probably six or seven two loopholes missing. There's a gap, right? And it happens to be directly across from the new water treatment. Seven months ago, we did a new permit for the state. A commission that pulls them at our expense. Recently, within a week, we found out, getting the people that, we found out that the state had supposed to alter our application after several months of waiting. So we have to extend the funds or we have to return the funds. So we modified the scope work a little bit to see if we can get as much of it done as possible without carrying a lot of it in. So before you, you have a we're going to bring on, it's a contract with a scope of work to include three water locations, restore locations, and an add alt to add one mile of fiber north from Almahad Beer on 3A. And for one mile, as we have get, as we get future grants, we'll be able to continue to add up one mile at a time to get into North Situate, which I would expect that we would be able to do in our next grant cycle.
And so these are all, they're separate, but they're all for one, one big project and I'm under that same umbrella.
One contract, two scope awards. The second scope award was the add.
Questions? This is, this is, this is basic infrastructure to get high speed.
The grant two also is covering, of course, it's a combination of grant and funds, but water is sort of not a lot to get here. For a lot of that totals the whole project. And the whole total of the whole project includes ECP fields, networking equipment at the sites. Some of, most of it would cover, cover the grant. It doesn't feel like I'm doing it.
Yeah, all right. Let's do this all for the brand. Please, yes.
And the benefit to the community is?
So anytime we can bring on, so it's a big asset for the water and sewer department, they can remotely monitor the different wells. Remote control the wells in the sewer comp stations, so they're saving labor, more real-time information. They can get rid of some of the expensive lines that they have now that are monitoring it. So they're basically rebuilding a central panel for the new water treatment plant. They have a single panel access where they can see the site around the town.
And it's redundant, so that one, one connection breaks down and it comes to the other.
Correct. So if you're building that we have in Town Hall, it comes out and it goes around the ring of two direction, clockwise and downward clockwise. So if one goes down, the other side stays up and runs. And the water and sewer locations will be done a little bit differently, but fundamentally they're protected. Similar.
Thank you.
Great backup. All the questions.
I guess I'll ask my, the I guess my question was, answer by Nancy, I think I got it, on how the billing schedule, all of this. So what was different from the first backup to the second backup?
The first backup had the add alt that added in. And I was trying to give it to Shari on Friday so she'd get it to your packets. And I was waiting for the vendor to get back to me with the revised, I have the add alt pulled out and separated. So if you add the add alt with the updated add alt and the updated primary scope together, it would equal what you were presented on the primary.
Oh, okay.
Okay. You're good.
Yeah.
Take a motion.
Move to award a contract to Contract Court for the production and installation of fiber optic cable at municipal facilities in an amount about to exceed $257,842.26.
Harrison, on favor.
Hi. I was going to say, you'll call them now, but I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for pointing. Black hole.
Thank you. Just to watch this coming out, don't make these my all.
Everybody.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Goodbye.
So as part of the CPC projects that was approved at the April Town Meeting, the Cedar Point Association agreed to put coal, about $400, coal is replaced, and that black hole at Hart Park. It's been all about $400.
Yeah.
And the work is set up. And that would be the $400 spent on the black hole. And then after that, it would go to the CPC project. And I included the estimate we had provided to us and he's expecting the black hole to be done on July 25.
Questions about accepting my guess?
Can we get more?
I don't need it. But we resolved whatever issues related to the law, putting it up, taking it down, the etiquette of it all. I know that was a concern that various people had.
Yeah, we resolved, resolved before we went to town.
That was resolved at CPC, when the CPC proposed it, I think. It was, they said that they would be lower.
Yeah.
They would have thought about this.
Association would be responsible for.
But that wouldn't do it for the park because of the area.
I still recall some confusion, so I just wanted to clarify that.
It's been clear.
Yes, I wish.
It's clear for the attorney. Thank you.
It's all.
I don't know. You're all going to have to do that someday.
It costs money too.
So we will accept with appreciation.
Please take a motion, accept with appreciation.
Move to accept the $400 donation from the Cedar Point Association for the replacement of that hole at Hart Park pursuant to community preservation project approved at the April 14, 2025 annual town meeting with many thanks.
Second. Harrison second, but Ms. Conley, on the favor. Aye. All right. We're just going to be in hot for two minutes.
Can we do something else?
Sure. So just to close down on the schedule of the public hearing, 6:45. Legally, we cannot start until exactly 6:45. You're following the rules. So let's, was there any liaison reports or correspondence right here?
Because we knew that Zach's ice cream hot capella.
Oh, yeah.
I don't think they're coming with other.
I don't. We polled him about it. I don't know that it's going to be late. I don't know whether it's going to be good or not.
You have a contract?
True. All right, contract up.
Everyone's like, sweet, I think.
Don't lose my voice, sorry. This is the board, we're on Borden and Remington? Yes. Got it, all right. 7:50, page one on our, and then on then our backup and the page. This is basically the chemical from sodium, the end-to-end product. And it's materials that we use for the water treatment plant as well as sewage treatment plant. The first one is bulk soda ash. And Mr. Borden and Remington, follow me.
129.
Now wait, here's my favorite part of this. The rate decreased by 0.6%. All right. So this is, we have one year, a little bit, so then again, this is the state state list that they had to go through, that we go through, and amazingly, we had a decrease.
We get the rates from this.
Yeah. It's, it's all the towns basically.
Yeah, it's all the towns together.
All right. Questions, comments? No? On soda ash, we're good? All right. I'll take the motion.
Move to award a contract to Borden and Remington Court of Fall River to provide sodium carbonate, bulk soda ash in the unit cost of 0.262 cents per pound for an aggregate amount not to exceed $150,000 for the fiscal year 2026.
Go back. Just one more second, guys. Now, Harrison, on favor.
Aye.
All right. Potassium hydroxide. It has increased by 7 cents per gallon, I believe. Very exciting. Unfortunately, we can't take it in bulk in the last 3,000 gallons. Will we be able to take it in bulk in the future or not? No, we just don't have the capacity. And 1.7% increase. All right. Take a motion.
Move to award a contract to Borden and Remington Court of Fall River to provide potassium hydroxide at the unit price of $4.7568 per gallon for bulk deliveries less than 3,000 gallons and $4.4304 cents per gallon for bulk deliveries of more than 3,000 gallons for an aggregate amount not to exceed $350,000 for fiscal year 2026.
One more, everybody. Ms. Conley, on the favor.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. All right. It is now officially passed, 6:45, when I had to start a public hearing. So this is for the shellfish license renewals. We have, Mike, selfish, did I say selfish?
Yes.
Shellfish. Shellfish. 28. 27. You can have, you can have everybody up.
27.
Need to read a public hearing notice. All right. It was recorded and then if you can tell you exactly what it is, then you have to take comments.
What do we do first?
Don't.
Don't they present first before I was coming?
You should read the public hearing now, as soon as it records.
Yeah, can you back it?
Yeah.
It's stamped with the text in.
Page 28.
Do you want me to read it or do you need to read it?
It doesn't have any.
The select board will hold a public meeting at Town Hall, 600 Chief Justice Cushing Highway on Tuesday, May 27, 2025 at 6:45. The board will consider renewal agriculture license applications pursuant to MGL Chapter 130, Section 60, revised by the below applicant for agriculture grants in Situate Waters off of Bassington Beach. Jamie Davenport of 16 Booth Hill Road, Situate, Mass. 02066, and Gregory Wallencardt, resident of 144 Lambres Lane, Cohasset, Mass. 02055, license number 23-01 for a license area BH-01. Lawrence Trobridge, resident of 7J Road, Situate, Mass. 02066, license number 23-03 for area BH-03. Michael Cotter, resident of 42 Situate Road, Situate, Mass. 02066, license number 23-02, area BH-02. Select Board, Andrew Goodrich, Chair. Right into the record.
So. So actually, Jamie, why don't you come on up? Sit up here. Um. So, yeah, so this, uh, just to explain for folks, we're doing, take some, any questions or comments, um, from the public, obviously, but this is a, um, it's a long time coming, but this is just, this is a renewal of these licenses. This is for extended five years. Right. Um, so the same area, folks have been, um, already working. Um, so with that, I will first open up any questions or anything from the public. See them in person, I'm now looking online. I've seen on the.
Mr. Goodrich, you have no hands raised.
No hands are raised, all right? There any time, time I have to give for comments? I don't.
Nope, we move it at this point, you have the comments in public, we have no comments. So the board can move on to the actual motion.
Is there any you want to say or thoughts on things you're going? Uh, I can speak at any time if you wish, yes. If you think it's going well, yes, sure.
Move that the select board, you can renew the three agricultural licenses approved by. Under seven, approved by the board to plant, grow, and take shellfish from the north Citewatt waters of Massachusetts Bay, DMF designation MB one zero dot zero, as indicated on the plan on trial with the town administrator, Shellfish Constable and Select Board. This license is issued in accordance with compliance of relevant sections of Massachusetts general laws, Chapter one thirty, semicolon, code of Massachusetts Regulations Title three twenty two dot one five dot zero and Title three twenty two dot one six dot zero. In the town of Shellfish, of Citewatt Shellfish Agricultural License Regulations License Program, failure to comply with the federal, state, and local laws and regulations shall result in license ratification. License area and coordinates are outlined on each of the following licenses. License twenty five dash zero one issued to Jamie Davenport of sixteen Booth Hill Road, Citewatt, Massachusetts, oh two oh six six, and Gregory Wallingford of one forty four Lambrecht's Lane, Cohasset, Massachusetts, zero two zero two five. License twenty five zero two issued to Michael Cotter, forty two Citewatt Road, Citewatt, Massachusetts, zero two zero six six. License twenty five dash zero three issued to Lawrence Throwbridge of three ninety two, Tilden Road, Citewatt, Massachusetts, zero two zero six six.
Here one more second, bye.
Second.
Ms. Harrison, all in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Two minutes. Good for you.
Thank you.
Oh, no, in five years, good.
Yeah.
Excellent.
All right. Of course, yes, please.
It's, it's, I am so happy that this is happening on my last meeting.
Yeah.
Um, this has been going on for years, so we all well know. So, congratulations. You know, you guys have done a great job. I think there are people who don't even know you're out there. And so all the, all the blue and all the nonsense is sudden fury signifying nothing. And I hope that the person in Cohasset, who's been riding on this for years, decides he's done. And so I just want to thank you for all the hard work you do and Mike for all of the people who design Shellfish Constable. It's, it's, this has been, this is a victory. And I have to say it, it's a victory.
Thank you for all you did and Karen, the other Karen is not personally here, but thank you for all of your work. I believe it's. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Well, now that you've been rid of, now we want to make some amendments to these regulations.
Would it change the rules now?
Would it change the fees, right? I wonder if they're about fees.
Ever so slightly, so as, as you know, we went through regulations in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. They're pretty strict, we hold the regulations probably strictly from the state. Uh, we did look at other, other towns, looked at those, ours are pretty hard, I felt, with the, of the uh, Shellfish Advisory Committee. So we met last Wednesday and I did propose a few changes to them in the regulations. Um, under section four point two on page two, we had the unanimous vote to amend the one thousand dollar annual report fee to two hundred dollars, which is still probably the highest in the state for these permits. Um, other towns are twenty five hours, some are one fifty, some are two hundred, but would have been right on the higher tier of the permits. And then under section four two, section D, unanimous vote was taken to amend the annual inspection fee, uh, which is my job to go out there and inspect from two hundred to one hundred. Uh, as I said, these are three stewards of the, of the community in town to go out there. I don't think you're gonna do anything nefarious or to attack the environment or their, their catch in their farm. Um, I spoke in many public hearings that a state's full of the last two and a half years that have been one cake that washed up and that was out of the restroom. That's been, it's, it's a long way out, we're gonna walk and check on things, but you know, that's, these guys are not gonna sleep, think later on. There's been zero reports to my email in Town Hall as far as, uh, do you hear a drift up there or anything that's been left, left behind? Um, do you hear point Karen, there's much to do above nothing, it's over two hundred acres up there, I believe, and we're literally farming three of them. Um, the boss of the town, she still has, had to stay the one acre plot for the town education. And I would welcome Cohasset, something to come to the table to educate your kids on the maritime side of agriculture. So I think we, if you're willing to do that with them, and there's some good people and, and Cohasset that can come to the table, definitely do that. Anyway, back to the fees. So the current proposal fees are, if you, if they had to pay these, it's one thousand five twenty five. And then the new, the whole proposed fee structure goes down to six hundred twenty five dollars a year. So still, you know, still a skate in the game, um, a thousand dollars was way significant. And I think when we met on Wednesday, we talked about a thousand dollar fee and we, we really wanted some really hard, um, fees up there. We, we didn't want people coming in, really dealing with their permits and farming. These guys have been to lawsuits and pick it thin, and they're still standing and they're, they're on their heels also. Good harvest this year as well. Um, one farmer here is already, um, has a citrus sandwich and a Marshall, the Citewatt restaurant. So it's pretty awesome to go there, so. Uh, just one more thing I'd like to say too, the last time we met, uh, we did request a two acre plot versus the one. Um, currently, whether you sit now in, in the, in the water column, it's really hard for the farm for four or five hours. It's like a two, three hour window of the farm is kind of dangerous, like it said last year. But if we can expand a little bit to the south, it will just provide more catch and give them more time to farm safely, so. Um, we just want to get that on the agenda for future farming, if I would repeat.
Appreciate that. And anytime I talk about fees, I remember things we all know is that fees not supposed to be more than actual. Yeah. And there's, we didn't really know particularly exactly what it should be, what the reporting fee should be and we had some guidance, so now we're going to broaden the line, broaden the line.
We're still not right here.
Yeah.
Uh, just if, if, um, I can bring us back to five or six years ago when we were trying to create the, the rules and regulations for all of Citewatt, not just to bring starberr in this particular agriculture program. And we, you know, we were taking, drawing from all the different regulations in Barstool and Duxbury. Um, we, we didn't really look at their fee structures too closely. There was a lot of talks swirling around about, um, just the, the stomach for that, for something like this. And, and what's in it for the town and, you know, how can they financially come out, that just costs the town anything? And so I remember the, um, there was a lot of outside pressure from, from, um, you know, people that were attending the meetings to try and recoup some of the costs by, you know, putting them into the fees. But when you look at, um, the town of Barstool where it's not, um, an application or, or a renewal year, it's like a hundred and twenty five dollars of the fees, the twenty five dollar straight fee, which is the, the, the division of marine fisheries, um, requirement. And then a one hundred dollar fee, Dennis is, is, I think they increased one of their fees so that their total is like two hundred and twenty five in and off year, um, but fifteen hundred and twenty five is like, it's far away eight, nine, ten times more than anybody else. So even I feel, I mean, you know, obviously I'm a farmer and so, you know, I'm, I'm paying these fees, but I definitely feel that six hundred and twenty five a year is still, well, you know, is, is still a good, a good number. Uh, just kind of want to put, put out the, the, the feeling behind, you know, how we came to those numbers first. Everything good?
No, I mean, I agree. I mean, we, we just did what we, we did the best that we, we could, the information that we have, now that we're to a day's picture. And I agree with the theory that we should not be charging more than it costs us to do it. And also with all our other fees, we look at other towns too. So it kind of, it really makes sense.
Well, I think to be fair, you know, that's the way we look at building, the building permits, for example.
Yeah.
That it's not a profit center, it's, it's a matter of showing help and safety and public welfare. And that we have to charge something for those permits, and I know they get expensive, but, um, it depends on what the expenses are. If you're talking about plumbing electrical and, you know, um, hardware, building, whatever. If they can get out there, but this is, this is a different. So I think that people in town should feel good that, um, this is the way we're operating.
Who else? Well, I always believe that we need to take and, uh, pay our respect with, uh, any committee that's a volunteer committee. If the Shellfish Advisory Committee is recommending this and the excellent presentation by our Constable, laying it all out, the comparisons, this makes sense, so I'm in favor.
No comments? Uh, I'll take a motion.
Move to approve the proposed amendments to the Town of Citewatt Shellfish Agricultural License Regulations recommended by the Shellfish Advisory Committee for Section four point two, Fees C and D. C, once a license has been granted, an annual reporting fee shall be due in the amount of two hundred dollars per license. D, once a license has been granted, an annual inspection fee shall be due at the time of inspection in the amount of one hundred dollars per license.
Just one more second, bye, Ms. Harrison, all in favor.
Hi.
Hi. It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I hear you.
Yeah. Yep.
Thank you, guys.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Right with. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Okay.
And like where we are.
There you go.
Lauren, please.
Yes, boarding committees for diversity, equity, inclusion. We have, remember, we have from all of. Shannon Burke, uh, Israel.
Uh, she'll go ahead.
Uh, Dana. Elaine.
Yeah.
You have here, come on up.
It's going up, um, online. We have an old child, so she couldn't make it here.
Oh, sorry.
She could zoom in.
Of course.
So we just have to get him set up to, um, speak. So we can get up.
Yes. Oh, no, yeah. It's great. Hi, how are you? I'm sorry, uh, everyone's feeling well.
Oh, no, thank you. Oh, I just wanted to make sure my video turned on too, so you can see me, but my face looks blurry, so. Um, bear with me just a second, so you can actually see me.
I'm glad you said that, I thought it was me. Wait a minute. All right, well, excellent.
Yeah, well, thank you, everyone. I apologize, um, for not being in person. I really wanted to take a moment to meet in person, um, but this works, so, um, thank you. Um, I'm the first on deck, so you just let me know what you want me to do.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll kind of, we'll just kind of go down the, that way, we're kind of together for them. Uh, we'll start this first, everyone has to say their name and address for the record. Um, then we'll ask some questions, usually ask the same questions. Everyone, um, and so I'll, I guess I'll start with that one question, but it's your turn. Uh, it's why, why now? Why do you want to know and tell us, um, kind of your reasoning? And actually, since you're, uh, afar, uh, we'll let you go first.
All right, well, I'm Shannon Burke. I live on Chief Justice three six one, Chief Justice Cushing Highway in Citewatt. Um, and then you want me to go and answer the question, or did you?
Sure, yeah.
Okay. Um, so the reason why I'm interested in joining the committee, I moved to Citewatt, uh, three years ago. Um, I have a young daughter, uh, who is in kindergarten at Jenkins. Um, and we've had a lovely experience, um, in the town and with the school system. Um, and of course, I think we've all plugged into the news, so, um, have always been a big advocate of all things diversity, equity, and inclusion. Uh, but given the times that we live in, it's more prevalent than ever to be, um, very aware and concerned that these things continue in our society. Um, as we know that things are, you know, erased essentially at the moment in time from our history. Um, and given that I have a small child, um, that's important to me. I went to college in San Francisco, which is a very diverse community. I, I studied college there and part of my studies was around social justice. Um, and so with that, I also interned at the, um, homeless shelter there, Saint Anthony's Foundation. Um, but I didn't quite dive into the social justice sector, um, right out after college. Um, been out of school for a while, but, um, I am a small business owner. Um, so being involved in the community is, um, what I'm passionate about, what I enjoy. Um, it's very important to me to be, um, kind of ingrained and involved with the community um, and being surrounded and collaborating with people.
I don't know. Sure, yeah. She covered everything.
I was gonna say.
If I know, I'm gonna go first.
You didn't have to call up Karen, can you?
Yeah.
I definitely. Um, I'm at the other end of the spectrum, my kids, one of them will be, but they're all out there and friends different. Um, especially in today's times, I, I repeat what she said, we need this woman ever to be aware. Um, perhaps we're not as aware as we could be. I think I could learn a lot more. We don't see many cases of social injustice in Citewatt, doesn't mean it doesn't exist. Just be, I don't see it. Um, still working, uh, but I have plenty of free time. Uh, I have worked nine to five. And I guess that's it. I, I firmly believe we need a watchdog for this. Does it exist? I guess we'll find out. But if it does exist, we have to do something about it, and hopefully we don't have to do too much. It would be nice to think we don't have some serious problem yet, but again, who knows? I don't.
Is there also a lab that I live on, or Fourth Avenue, Detroit? Um, yeah, I mean, after Shannon and after Elaine, there's not really much to say, but it's really, when everyone else is stopping duty, I work, uh, still time to make sure things continue to do it. Um, I have a young son as well, who's coming to go to the City Public School. Um, and I'd like to make sure that you can drive there, uh, and if there are anything I can help with or you do, you have a young community that obviously to grow up here and all the community that's Asian here, so it's not just the young kids that are growing up, also the people who are growing up here and have grown up here, make sure that they can get around where they, where they need to get to and that some of the agents make sure they can get what they want, need.
I'm sorry, I neglected my address for certain two cases.
Oh, sorry. Not for her. Now, well, now we have another record. So, uh, there's some more questions?
Well, I, I just have a question for all the candidates, one of whom, I think this is gonna be a softball question too. Um, and maybe for all of you, uh, what experience do you have working on committees? And how important is it to you to work in collaboration and not just say what you think and eat what you want, but understand? You know what I'm saying?
I can tell you myself, I've worked at many committees in town. Not necessarily, certainly a county committee, but I've worked with, uh, to the Chamber of Commerce, um, Harris Day Committee, Fall of Citewatt Committee, um, Get Green Bush, all those kind of committees. I have, years ago, Scout Master, Cub Scouts, um, we did just train, you know, for the kids that were in this school, um, I worked at Father Bill's, I helped serve for the Veterans Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving breakfast, post party for, um, I don't know, I didn't. They made me learn, I think I finished.
I need to go first, I sound bad.
You remember something, you've got more experience, I've had more time to do it than you.
I don't have any experience on county committees. I have at work committees.
Well, just because it's a different type of committee.
Yeah, I mean, I serve in my role as finance committee, best tax committee, postal finance stuff. Nothing ESG or ER.
Mr. Chen.
Yes.
Could I respectfully, um, comment that the candidate on the screen had presented a resume. I have no resumes to look at about what you do, so now it's nice to hear that you do some of that in your work. But could they explain what their background is?
Sure, yeah.
Just answer, sorry, just to answer, well, I hear a lot of questions. I think it's important to tell everyone your opinion, but it's also important to voice that when you're working together, no one should be silenced. I want to be able to say what they want and then what they feel. And then obviously the group setting, there may be multiple voices at, multiple things at.
Shannon, then we'll come back to Jamie's question. Let you answer the committee.
Yeah, I mean, I've worked on an array of committees, whether it's been professional in my corporate career, or as a small business owner, or just a mom joining a PTO meeting, or a networking group with a group of women. I do belong to a couple of the chambers, the South Shore Young Professionals. I also recently joined the Situate Town Democratic Committee as well, and the newly organized Indivisible of Situate. So getting involved in those ways that we can, you know, help advocate for these types of issues that are, you know, of concern within the community. And just to add to that, I think, you know, being part of a committee and, you know, I think everyone is sharing the same sentiment here is being willing to, one, show up, and then being collaborative with people and working together towards a common goal.
Okay, thank you. All right, now we'll start. We'll go to Jamie's. Just go expand a little bit more on, you know, past professional experience, I don't know how far I can go.
Well.
Give me that part.
I can go thirteen years.
Oh, wow.
So I started off at college, working finance. Worked at various hedge funds and a lot of banks, I'm now a mutual fund from New York. Moved to Boston pretty early during COVID, came up for a weekend. My then boyfriend, now husband, ended up staying here during COVID before the house in Situate. So I work at a mutual fund, working home, going to New York weekend every month. And finance, I have a little bit of an entrepreneurial bug. I've launched two or three companies. None of them usually successful. But more just to get out of my system, a tech company, and then restructuring my finance for state treasurers in New Jersey and try to get control of New York.
Most people got a dog during COVID. You got a house and a husband.
I'm located in real estate. Probably that I worked in an office graphic design. I worked in the office, I'm not a designer. I've worked about twenty-five years in real estate, so I'm still working in real estate. No longer management. I was manager for maybe fifteen, about fifteen years. I just stepped down a couple of years ago. I'm still working there. I don't have open meetings and reports, and I'm a chaplain that my own office is very much. But I keep busy. I was fortunate that for many years when my kids were little, today it would be a luxury. I didn't have to work too much. My dad was a do-gooder, which I consider a bonus. Today, it's very great to see that, and it's not so much by choice, people just, that's what's happened. Or if you have any questions about that. As a matter of fact, my mother worked in real estate with your mother.
Yes, I was thinking.
Together. Yeah, they both worked together, I would say, yeah. I've lived in Situate most of my life. Now the town, I was seven, and the townies remind me, not a townie.
I knew every real estate lady in town. I would think I knew every real estate lady in town. Because my mother was always, she was.
She was all of them.
Yeah.
And as was mine.
It was a force of nature, yeah.
It's the, it's the job though, too, a whole other town too.
Yeah, it is. It is.
And I've liked it a lot of business, so I see a lot what's going on down there too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I.
Question.
You are the.
You are the.
Do you want me to watch the F P G S? Or do you not need to?
Should we have her resume?
I have her resume.
Yeah.
It was very informative. I do have one question of each of you, and I'll just take that and then take it each other's. Have you ever attended our D B I committee meetings?
I never know you have.
Some of the videos online, that's it.
I have not. I've read about it. I know it's a two-year commitment. I know some of the people on the committee. I didn't, I haven't spoken to them. I certainly didn't call them and say, but I know you, so I know two of the people on the committee, because I went online and looked it up, what exactly what it consists of, what the term was, and whose people were. So I have to say, probably half the names were familiar to me. I don't know them all personally, but I know the names. So I did look into it, but no, I have not gone to those meetings.
Jamie, any others?
I guess that's all I have right now.
Well, here's the part that usually applicants hate. I guess I'll tell you all, we're not voting on this right now. We're gonna come back and vote on it probably later. We'll talk about.
Is there another applicant, or did they?
No.
Oh, okay. I didn't know, was rescheduled or what?
No, with Tom.
Okay, thank you.
So there's, there are two, oh, so two open spots for applicants. That doesn't mean someone doesn't get picked. They still can't attend a meeting to go and get, is that someone, I'm sorry. Yes.
But also, so, whoever doesn't get picked doesn't mean you're not worthy. Would you also consider another committee? That's the other thing to think about. There's other, we have, how many committees? Thirty-five to forty?
A lot, like fifty.
We are committee cleaners here.
Well, try to make another.
It's honorable. If I can approach Shannon. It's honorable that you were willing to step up to do some volunteer committee work. So don't let, whoever the third person is, don't think that we don't watch you someplace in this group. There's no, no in our committees, so there's plenty, so that's all I'll say.
All right. Well, thank you, and just let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Everybody's time.
I have to, I have to in public thank you, Lori, for everything you did to make the light house ceremony. I don't think we've seen each other since then, but.
It was a great event.
She's a real doer.
Yes, it was a great event.
So my feeling is that whatever happens tonight, you're on the radar screen now, so sorry. You'll be another select person, but it was a pleasure working with her. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great. So then, so nice, so great background.
Yeah.
All right, we're a little early. But I don't think.
You're fine, you can keep going.
The Knights with my.
We're done. We're done.
Come on up. Thank you. Let's talk about this carnival.
Good evening.
We all. Bryce.
I'm Farlon Moore. I'm the Grand Knight of the Situate Council, 3716, and a pro chair of this year's carnival.
Michael James, and I'm Deputy Grand Knight.
So we worded the town once again. And before we get into it, I just want to give some acknowledgement to some excellent work done by Jody McDonough, her office for the town. The Knights for years have debated how long the carnival has been in session. And through research on various newspapers, we came back to archives, and then with the help of Jody, she did determine to us, the first discussion we had with the Board of Selectmen at that time was February 21st, 1956, where they approved a festival.
We didn't think it was that old.
At Father Quinlan's Playground, which is St. Mary's Parish in Attar. And it was then approved.
I, 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 yes, I bought peanuts, there you go.
So they discovered me a little while here, I don't know. With her help, we established that it was sixty-nine years ago that we're done with a year off for the pandemic. So this year marks our sixty-eighth year of putting on the carnival for the town and raising funds to go back to the community. So we hope to have do some spit and polish this year on the carnival, as we try to improve it every year, and then really do something special in a couple of years for the seventh.
Well, give us some more, kind of sell it a little bit. So what, it's the eighth, right? Eighth or the twelfth?
That's right.
Set up night before on the seventh, right at midnight, and then anything new? But you know, then a ride, a big spin one, or.
Yeah, we have.
A fan of, my kids love.
Right, we have proposed a little bit of expansion of the midway to get in three or four more rides. We're excited about that. And everyone in town seems to be in agreement on that, so we're excited about that. We are going to continue. Last year, we did a matinee at 371.
First time, I'll let it go.
Went very well.
Very good feedback from all the parents. It was. It started at seven. The kids are all asleep. We had people there at two o'clock waiting to get on the rides.
Yeah.
And it wasn't even, it was kind of sprinkling, and it was still there waiting to get on the ride. So we're gonna do it again, and we're trying to actually bring in a couple more, that's what I wanted. Bring in a couple more smaller rides, because it seems like there's never enough small rides, because we're concentrating on the seven to eleven people, and then we're trying to get something for them too.
So we're excited about that.
Yeah.
Fourteen, eleven, and nine-year-old are not excited at all over this. The only thing they ask about is proof. We're the carnival.
Well, we're being personally.
I am, I think I'm.
We're playing your kids, nor you said no. Yes, Virginia, there is a Santa Claus.
There is.
Yeah.
And an excellent fried Oreo.
We are, we're happy to, that also, that the ticket pricing is the same as last year, so we can play. We're the same way.
We'll send that out.
Did you get it ahead of time, or no?
Yeah, 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 online, wristbands, yep.
Yes, the show is our sponsor, and any unused tickets are served, what's a little known fact, any unused tickets or points that are now all electronic cards can be used at the.
And my fare as well. Not so much the wristband, but like tickets if you buy straight tickets, they're available.
You donate, so you can donate to the Knights, and then go join the bunch of them.
People who got there, load up, they should load up expert this year. Rest of us.
What really David Todd wants is parking. It's the topic I actually hate the most. And so I just, I just, I don't understand how we can take up almost the entire whole parkway. And I hear, no, no complaints about no parking. Now, how is this? Because if you guys have a magic formula for us to be able to deal with the people who tell me they won't walk from St. Mary's Parking Lot to the Melmore, I don't get it.
But they do. For the town, that parking lot is full, and we're allowed to use that.
There's a bandwagon here, but if we can do this, why can't we deal with the quote-unquote parking problems that we have?
So I think if St. Mary's main thing is, like during Harry's days, they have weddings, and they have church on Sunday.
Right.
Once church is over on Sunday, they don't use the parking lot.
Correct.
But we're in names, so we don't interfere with them.
And there are parking apps, it's gonna be one of my last things that you're gonna talk about. There are parking apps that are you can buy from, where if you're looking for a parking space, you go on your, you know, your phone properly, and you look for parking spaces, and let's just pop this up then. And it will hop up with various places where there's parking available. And the thing about the St. Mary's Parking Lot, and frankly, there's some other remote parking lots that are going to be used as well, if we had a good shuttle arrangement, is that the owner of the lot, in this case, St. Mary's, controls when there's parking available and when there isn't. So it would be very easy for them to say, you can't park here on the following Sundays for the following hours, or whatever, or Saturday afternoons for weddings, whatever. That parking lot is empty almost all the time.
I'll bring up another point, that we bring up so many good points that we've noticed, is that Situate has invested in making it a very walkable and bike-friendly town last, since I've been here the last thirty years. And we, year after year, the people will come down, go to dinner in the harbor, you know, to walk down, and then come to the carnival lapboards. Or if you're a teenager coming down for the evening, they're walking too, right? Or they're coming to the bypass, and they're blocking up their bikes somewhere. So I think because of the event and the various ages that we track, that people do that. Sometimes families go together at dinner, and then the kids go, or everyone comes, so it's, it's also compared to some other events, we get compliments from Chamber of Commerce and the people, because we're driving people into town on the evening. It's not that they really need that in the summer, but it's, it's been brought to our attention that it's a great way, that it's more walkable in our town. And a lot of people on a nice summer evening will walk down.
Well, I think people will walk now where they never would before, in terms of, you know, what they consider a long distance. So anyway, I just didn't know if you had some magic.
Well, the.
The light intervention.
The fireworks draw people too, right? Fireworks draw people. A lot of people with beach stickers will go park in the parking lot at the beach and watch across the bridge that way.
See? It's not on you. We just need to be more creative, so I wish you well. I had no idea you guys have been running for seventy, almost seventy years. That's amazing. Congratulations.
Thank you. I think you're right. I mean, you press even, you press even more than, totally gonna kill me for saying this. Pressing a lot of kids on those electric scooters, or you see a lot of kids not taking cars and other stuff.
It's a lot of parents dropping them off and going in, coming back to the metal at the club, and they know, right? We're only seven to eleven, so it's over at eleven, you gotta go home. Don't hang it up.
Make a motion if you'd like, please. Move to approve the special event permit to the Situate Knights of Columbus with the expanded footprint on Cole Parkway for the annual carnival to be held July 8th, July 12th. Pending all required inspections, setup will begin at midnight on June 1st.
If you want a second.
Second.
On the favor.
Can I say just one thing? I just want, thank you for doing that with the expanded footprint. Can you please make sure you don't walk that whole ramp back there?
No, that's gonna stop. We make sure the dumpsters are out of the way. That's in a certain spot, and I work very well with Hillbillons, who.
Oh, great, great.
And he tells me where he wants the town brings the barriers. And me and him go on Tuesday morning, because they have to get everything in on Monday, and he tells me where he wants those barriers put. So, and we make sure that is left open, because the fishermen have to get to their swans too. And we don't want to make that mess.
Thank you.
They have the work.
Thank you very much.
Let's hope you have a lovely day, all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll see you at the carnival. Ask you a little, yes.
I'll be there with my peanuts.
Make sure to stay hot.
Well, next year. Twenty-third will be seven. Twenty ninth, sixth will be seven.
We're still, I thought I said the party. You're on already. Come on up. Let's talk about food, parking prescriptions. Okay, all right.
A lot of, tons of kids in the.
I'm sorry.
Tons of those people like on those electric scooter.
Yeah, they're really kids. And then having all the rounds, good, have to go back and play, cuddle around.
All right, I'm sorry, off track, but we got it. All right. So, yes, let's talk about. so, yes, let's talk about uh no parking and some of the features.
Yeah, so essentially similar to back in April, what we did with the updated parking schedule, we're just looking to update the parking schedule with the new decision on the split rock. So Morikai Lincoln, if you look at the traffic schedule right now, um it just outlines the first hundred feet there on the western side of Morikai Lincoln stretch parking, we're just looking to put on the eastern side as well, just make it a loading zone, kind of four seats.
Let's not jump ahead.
Yeah, that's
I agree with you.
We did, we're, we're
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Apologize. Uh all right, yeah, beach parking. Uh yeah, so for the beach parking, we just wanted to be consistent with what the sign it says in town. There's nothing currently on the traffic schedule, so if someone wants to go and look at that, there's no restrictions there stating that you can't park there opposed to what is currently posted at the beach slots. So we were just looking to add that to the schedule, so um people will be aware of it in the event that there were some sort of appeal.
That makes sense. It was just code of law, right? Must have been, was it an oversight or something? Why be a big one?
I, I don't understand.
That was not said.
We all just know about the beach sticker parking, we just know it? It's not signed?
Well, that's, that's it, that's good.
But there's signage before, like as you're entering every block, it's like right there posted there, but it hasn't been on the schedule.
No sticker, no
It's not on the schedule, which means like we write a ticket, then it goes through, and if somebody
and if somebody disagrees with us, they already say it's not on the schedule.
Correct, yeah, they want to come to you, it's correct.
It's, it's hard to enforce if it's not on the schedule, versus if it's on the schedule, it can be enforced.
Well, I see, put it on the schedule.
Motion, all right, you like a motion? Love a motion.
Move that the select board vote to update the traffic schedule, the town of Cituit scheduled on parking section four feet parking to include no parking without a town of Cituit issued beach sticker for the following town beach slots. Almaroc, Minut, Egypt, Sand Hill, Peggy, and Memorial Day, from Memorial Day to Labor Day.
Mr. Gilmore.
Second.
Ms. Harrison, all in favor?
Aye, aye, it is the yes.
I do, like, I do wanna remind people, because this was, this was a big question for the even for the board race, so that's a question, right? We are only, you, a Cituit resident costs thirty-five dollars to get a ticket, to get, to get a beach sticker. Thirty-five dollars, it's roughly a hundred days, it's thirty-five cents per day. This is a very low fee for people in the town of Cituit, if you live in the town of Cituit. But it's very important for, to this board and for people to have access, if you live in the town. If you don't live in the town, you can come visit our beautiful beaches from Labor Day to Memorial Day without a sticker, without getting a ticket, because we think access is important. We want to balance as a board, we wanna balance access with also allowing folks in town to have that, like, right to go to the beach when it's, when it's really crowded and when it's during the season. So we do the best that we can as a board to balance access for all, as well as um our residents being able to park in the high season, so I just don't want to need to say that, because I'm not gonna be like, oh, now you're gonna, now you're gonna send us to the they're gonna have to pay the tickets, well, I mean, like, it's really important for the people in town to go to the beach, and it's really, I counted it. Like, it's ninety-nine hundred days, thirty-five dollars.
Great deal.
It's like a great deal if you're a resident of Cituit. Probably like the cheapest thing you could
You gotta pay the dollar.
Or thirty-five cents.
Do you?
It's cheaper than getting a ticket.
It's way cheaper than getting a ticket.
That's true.
So I just felt I needed to say that, because I was like, I
Well, it's more so
It was important, so we
We don't have access to the beach, it's called congestion pricing.
It is, it is.
So when we know it's gonna be really congested, we know when that it's gonna cost you, and, and so, but if, when you look at it, it's thirty-five cents a day, oh, fuck, yeah.
But this board made the decision, but this board actually made the decision plus Karen made the decision to make it that anyone can go to the beach from Labor Day to Memorial Day without a sticker. We made that decision, and there aren't a lot of towns in Massachusetts that have that, so come to Cituit, yeah, we'll talk to you too.
I think just another one thing to let people know, all the money from the parking passes, stays with the beaches. It's not put in the general fund, stays at the beach, pays for the trash pickup, pays for light guns, pays for the Moby mask, pays for all the stuff we do at the beaches. So it's not coming to the general fund, it's not enriching the town, stays with the beaches for the benefit of the beaches.
That is another excellent point, right?
Excellent. Now, we got the, a no parking zone. We're working.
Yeah, jumping on that.
No, no, sorry, yeah.
Put the picture, Max.
Uh yeah, so that was part of the uh split rock decision, so we're just looking to update that um here, essentially, what it said to the western side of Morikai Lincoln.
Oh, this is on the other, this is the western side.
Split rock, yes, it'll be a garden at the
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you should.
Yeah, but they can unload, unload it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And the planning board also recommended this too, right?
Correct, yeah.
Right on the backup, the planning board and you kind of together
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, they gotta pass along, potentially send it out, they'd be able to utilize that as a loading zone for, for delivery and whatnot.
Sounds good. Um questions, what they got?
Move that select board vote to adopt a no parking zone with a fifteen-minute loading slash unloading exemption for the first one hundred feet from Yannett Road on the easterly side of Morikai Lincoln Road, and update the traffic schedule of the town of Cituit.
Mr. Gilmore, second by?
Second.
Uh Ms. Harrison, all in favor? Aye. Yes.
Standing. You very much.
Thank you. How is today?
And we're going to the
Name ring.
Follows. I know, it's personally, it's just not here, but
It's like her baby. Yeah, that's it.
You should be able to discuss this.
It's a lot, it's a lot, it's a lot of people, babies. Oh, is it?
It's been going on.
For years.
It can be a lot of people, babies.
This is
But the only question I, that I heard, a long
I just have one.
Question is um on public, here are public notice, it should be twenty-one days, in here it says, uh, it says twenty-one days for, for public notice. Do we think that's too long? Should it be fourteen days, or do we not, do we not have to worry about it? Your biggest thoughts?
Oh, I didn't have either way, I was just, it seemed like a long period, like one day, public notice.
I think, you want to explain, you explain it, just, it has to do with the cyclical of our meetings.
No, it just means two meetings, I mean, right, and then the meeting, and it's
So your mates have a year there.
Yes.
I have an addition, um, I wasn't expecting to see this, but here it is. Um, one of the things that I would like to see included in the policy is that the select board may, at its discretion, require the petitioner, and whether the petitioner is a citizenry or a group, or even the select board itself, make a contribution. And the, the determination as to what the contribution would be, would be decided by the select board to a maintenance fund. We desperately need to keep uh, we, we don't wanna see some of these things get named for someone, and then have the family come to us and you know, eight years and say the place is a mess, and, and we have, we have, as a board required various groups to establish a maintenance um agreement.
In a dot key?
Yeah, and, and, you know, even if it's a small amount to start with, if it's, if it's something that's brand new, it won't need anything for a few years, it'll be give you time to build it up, but we, we have a number of existing um maintenance, or whatever you wanna call them, uh, over at the baseball fields, don't we?
Do you have some questions, Scott?
And the, the uh what was the, the skate, what, the skate park, I get the skate park, confused with the
Yeah, the skating rink.
Well, yeah. And when the family came into
Steaming the rank.
Yeah. So I would like to see that stated as part of the policy, and again, it's at the discretion of the select board to decide what amount would be appropriate, or to establish a maintenance fund.
Be moved.
Yeah, but I, I think it's just a, it needs to be written in stone here.
Oh, I love it.
That's the only thing I
All right, let's take it out to stainless for what you're naming and what it is, so the rich communications center is named after Joe Norton, that's a room in a town building. We maintain that, that's not something we would ask them to maintain, so you just have to put something in there.
Well, that's why I would say it should have the discretion to be a
Or like a donation.
All right. Yeah.
All right, yes.
I love it. Is there any other concerns?
I agree, we had something you want
I do, so um well, yeah, there's two things actually to amend, one, I think we should amend the name of the name of the policy to the Karen Cantil, the name of the policy. And internally, I would like to further
Karen Connolly parking, maybe?
Oh, no, I have an idea. Internally, since we kind of passed the policy, and we could internally critique W for those, for the parking near the harbor. Uh, Pier Forty-four shall be known as the Karen Connelly, internally now. Parking section of DPW, we would agree with that.
I like that too.
We will always be officially in
Remembering Connelly.
Park, the harbor parking.
Whatever you have to think it is about it.
So
But do you remember Connelly until there's no parking?
Exactly.
So I will make a motion, I will move that we uh approve out of Cituit. Uh again, internally now, Karen Cantil name of the policy. And the internally DPW, uh Karen Connelly Harbor Parking Area by Pier Forty-four. And have a further be moved that at the discretion of the select board, be able to make a determination for maintenance funds for a um
Per project.
Per uh project. Uh donated
Yes.
under consideration of the name of policy, as written and now amended, October twenty-nine, twenty-two. Second. I stopped saying my Mr. Gilmore, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You know what you just did, named two of them after the month of the
Well, we're gonna start.
Oh, now we have two.
Make it, make it, make it unofficial.
No, officially, it's officially just not a sign.
I'm not, I'm not, note that, not one
DPW notes will always, it may as well change it.
Oh, I'm gonna add this.
We can, yeah. All right. Um before we put the boards committee, can we actually just get to the Zach's Ice Cream truck?
Yes.
See, I could use the mic speed. Don't see Chris, I'm sorry, Chris, I'm reading Chris, don't see Zach. See CDs and, yeah, um Yeah, uh questions, comments about um right, uh love Zach, is there any changes for these places?
Um
No, the only
There's nothing, I don't think.
No, changes.
It's a renewal.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a renewal, it's just the new process this year for ice cream trucks requires additional um background, right?
He was fingerprinted and hoarded, and both of those of them really, um, we had no issues with him doing that.
He has, yeah, so the, the only other thing of notes, um the day of, we know this officially, can I say that, or do we, is this unofficial?
I thought.
Okay, so, yes, we
As we know.
Now, he's been actually a direct person for twenty years or so, well, he may not have you should know the rules, but um yeah.
Can we just say, do you rule for them? Look for fingerprints, which he did.
Last big dance. He happened around, I mean after twenty-five years, we're gonna, I'm not worried about that.
I mean, he wasn't, I don't know if he's been in town for, but he was around without his license.
Just bring it up to put in notes, you don't have to do something with smart stuff, it's me, it's all right. Yeah.
Yeah.
You knew we had to get it done.
All right.
All right. I'll take a
As long as he has a road, raise an ice cream.
All right, I'll take a motion, yeah.
Move to renew the offer of a license for Zach's Ice Cream for two thousand twenty-five season pending all required criteria.
Okay.
So second by, excuse me, second by Ms. Harrison, all in favor? Aye, yes. All right, now we go back to uh board of committee appointments. Uh diversity, equity, and inclusion, we wanna talk about this, any um thoughts, concerns, anyone who uh put forward, you wanna
So we have three candidates who's spots. Who wants?
Yeah. My, my opinion, might as well just put it right up there, I think Elaine has a greater potential than some of her other attributes, like like you mentioned, the White House and stuff, I think that the other two have actually done a little bit of homework on it. One with the other, either my lifestyle or my research. So I'm in favor of this gentleman, Israel and Shannon. And I'd like to suggest we find a home for Elaine in a more, a more appropriate community for her history, expertise, view of states, all the other things that she does so well, my
How do you say that? I was she were on the committee of facilities to help, she knows those small businesses, we've been talking about business access, and other stuff, I might do it. You know, my
Yeah, but we would wanna help her in finding
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Well, I would suggest to the board that she is a linchpin in terms of dealing with historical society, historical commission, the Chamber of Commerce, um, the various business groups, so I, I know she's got we should get one, maybe we're just I don't want this done the wrong way, action.
Well, her actually, yeah, her actually, she's done this for years, why would all of a sudden she shift into a a very valid city, but maybe, I think she could be better off.
You know, I will say, just, just as my looking at I don't think we've got anyone per age on this committee, if I recall. Um, so it, it, it might be valuable to have an older person who's respected. Um, but I, I, I agree though, I think, I think there's probably a more appropriate, better fit for skills on a, a number of committees, so
We don't want to lose that, I mean, they're right, she's fabulous, oh, those are, I just
It's, I'm gonna have pretty really good candidates, I don't wanna lose, and I love that there's like many folks coming into town that are also very interested.
Right.
Cause I mean, I also look right for many, and it's a lot of, like, you don't have a lot, there's many, they don't
Right.
It is. Yeah, so I think they're all about the big rate.
So I'm more than happy to talk to her, only, you know, what else she might like, and I know it's not my job to do it, but it could certainly pass along, um, as
Some please, just
Yeah, all right, great.
Yeah.
Motion, please, yes. Move to reappoint Thomas Sikor, Angela Rivera Gray, Reverend Natasha Stewart, and Elena Gulata to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee for a term of two years until a successor is named. Move to appoint Shannon Burke and Israel Sobol Adler to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee for a term of two years or until a successor is named. Move to reappoint Stephanie Holland to the Public Building Commission for a term of three years or until a successor is named. Move to reappoint Jeffrey A. Palmer to the Shellfish Advisory Committee for a term of three years or until a successor is named.
All right. And Mr. Gilmore, second by, and Ms. Harrison, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes, please, Mr. Jeff, I mean, funny, yeah, lovely. I think we should still be, I'll get some extra time, lovely. You're helpful. Um, great, so now we're on contracts. Yeah, we did help with building, we did the Shellfish, we did Zach, so now contracts for time, Mr. James Bro.
Oh.
And Nancy Holt.
All those guys, huh?
Yes. Okay. That was on page one fifty-two, so yeah, you like to say it, right, so, yeah, we're uh I mean, yeah, we all tee it up, I mean, we, we talked, we talked first in the, in uh second session. And, yeah, we get an offer, and I mean, and sadly, as we all discussed. And yeah, we get an offer and I mean, and Stephanie, as we all discussed. And it will not matter.
And this is for both Nancy and Jim for three years, for three years.
Nancy and Jim. Yeah, three years.
Who both have expired contracts. Mine actually has an alien left on already, so. Um. Obviously, I don't want to go again a year, so I asked the board to do a three year contract, which is what we normally do. Uh very grateful for the board for your support. Happy to hopefully be here for another three years. So yeah, I do play a lot of it on a regular basis. Um and Nancy's contract is one of the few contracts that the board does. The contract is also expiring. I always said there's nobody that's irreplaceable, but if there's anybody close to irreplaceable, uh it'd be our finance director, Nancy Holt. So it's. Uh I think it's important that we lock her up, keep her happy. Um I did not give her the.
I don't know, lock her up.
No, I would lock her in. It was my contract. I would. Um I did not give her the bring a cat to work day. She has.
No, I said that.
But I do want to go home and take care of my cats, so that's a concession. She can go home. Uh I appreciate the board's support and uh look forward to another three years. So you go sit in that.
Love it. Thank you to both.
And the increases were in line with what other employees in town got as increases, like solo piece and all that.
Yes. Conscious of.
Matches of equity and.
Yes.
Okay.
Motion.
Look to award an employment contract to James Fudro, administrator, for the term of fiscal year twenty six through fiscal year twenty eight. And to award an employment contract Nancy Holt, finance director, town accountant, for the term of fiscal year twenty six through fiscal year twenty eight.
Ms. Harrison, second by Ms. Conley on the favor. Ah, yes.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, uh leave some courts or course clause?
I have one course clause to the chair. Do women make it, sir? Can you see that? Do women make it, sir? The following neighbors of Cobble Lane, Hughes Road, Foxwell Lane, and Old Kent Street expectly, expectantly. Request to the town of Situate that the aforementioned roads be repaid at the earliest opportunity. These roads. Not been resurfaced in over forty years that are now a safety hazard to their neighborhood, to the neighborhood showing on their bikes and scooters. Safely enjoying the comfortable job or walk around the block is also treacherous at at best, avoiding poor road conditions and numerous bottles. Thank you for your attention to this safety matter and they're signed by you in every practically everything on the street.
It's like thirty, there are thirty red boots that's lined.
Yeah, every street covered by.
That's a.
So.
Love.
Well, it's sort of near the.
Stop, Gilson.
Yeah, so you know.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
You have, you have to sort of go a lot.
Cobble Lane, Hughes Road, Foxwell Lane, and Old Kent.
Oh, yeah.
And we get the DPW to give us some of this for our next again.
Well, I went up there after I get the petition. Uh there were a couple of, I wouldn't even call it bottles, craters on Foxwell. Uh that were set spilled several years ago. Fox, that neighborhood had major problems with water line breaks. So we had some money left and one of our water projects, when we placed all the water lines in, we didn't have enough money to do the sheets. So I've asked the DPW to go in and price out. We could probably just do what's called an overlay, but because of the amount of traffic that they get, we would have to take them out. Raise the structure to overlay. So I've asked them to price it out and see if we're already done. Waiting for, but they've already priced out our payment schedule for this year. But we'll see if maybe because it was a water project, if we have some money on some of our water projects, which we would pay to defer. Uh go up there and just measure it out, give us a price.
Thank you.
Alright.
What?
Yeah.
Person.
Uh I have no, I have no, he's on the course. Um who's who's storing the last station? Meeting minutes. We're going meeting minutes.
Move to accept the select board amendment, May thirteen, twenty twenty five, further move to accept and not release the select board executive session regarding shop shop. May thirteen, twenty twenty five.
So and you can do this to, you got an extra piece.
Oh, right, the other.
Yeah.
Uh oh, sorry. Further move to accept and not release the select board executives.
No, move and accept and release the middle one.
Oh, move to accept the select board executive session minutes for May thirteen, twenty twenty five regarding contract negotiation for founder administrator and finance director.
Alright, so move on. Ms. Harrison, second, and Ms. Conley on the favor. Ah. Now, to enter us, executive session. Love that.
Just think.
Just think. Good thoughts.
Yay.
Um. Alright, the chair declares that the select board move into executive session pursuant to verse three, hoping to be allowed to discuss strategy in perspective litigation. And declared that of a meeting man, effective in negotiating position with select board in connection with this matter. Shellfish aquaculture, I only said that properly. Move that the select board go into executive session pursuant to verse three, hoping to be allowed to discuss strategy in perspective litigation of shellfish aquaculture and a meeting. And a detrimental effect on the negotiation decision of the select board in connection with the matter of the board not reconveniing in session. This requires a little call and votes.
You have a second?
Second.
Ms. Durbin Rich?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yeah.
Mr. Gilmore?
Ah.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Thank you, unanimous on favor.